Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Ward Seven City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Max Sanders, and I will be your moderator this evening. Today's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of St. Paul and is in partnership with the St. Paul Neighborhood Network, IATA Leads, and Sustain St. Paul. The League of Women Voters St. Paul conducts candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. We believe the success of our city depends on the values, knowledge, and commitment of our elected officials. Thus, it's essential for the public to better understand the views, opinions, and commitments of people running for elected office. It is this understanding that better equips voters with information to make informed voting decisions. We appreciate the candidates and the audience for taking the time to be with us tonight. Before we begin, I'd like to let you know that you all have cards on your chairs for writing questions to the candidates. Once you have a question, please hold it up, and a volunteer will come pick it up from you. Today's forum is for the candidates running for office of Ward Seven City Council. I'd like to welcome Padre Vang, Kartumu King, Shaniqua Johnson, Dino Garen, and Alexander Born. Thank you all for participating tonight. The candidates participating in today's forum have all agreed to the forum rules which were included in their invitation to participate. Each candidate will give a two-minute introductory statement. The candidates will have one minute to answer questions. Should a candidate be mentioned and named by another candidate, they can choose to get 30 seconds for a rebuttal. A timer will signal them when they have 30 seconds remaining and when their time is up. We will accept written questions throughout the forum. Questions submitted by the audience must be applicable to all candidates, nonpartisan, and must be on topics relevant to the office. Once you have a question written, again, please hold it up, and an usher will collect it. Questions that are of a personal nature, embarrassing, hostile, or unclear in intent will not be asked. Similar questions may be consolidated, and questions may be edited for clarity or brevity. Campaign literature, buttons, signs, clothing, or any other campaign-related items are not allowed in the room, but information on candidates is available on the tables outside the studio. Please remain as quiet as possible so that everyone may hear. Please hold your applause until the forum has ended so that the candidates will have as much time as possible to answer your questions, and please place your cell phones on silent. Members of the media may be recording this forum for their own use, and the forum is being recorded by the St. Paul Neighborhood Network for viewing by the public. With that, we will start with opening statements. Candidates each have two minutes for an opening statement, and we will begin tonight with Padre.
Thank you so much, everyone, for joining us tonight. My name is Padre Vang, and I'm an Associate Professor of Social Work at St. Catherine University. I've come to this race with over 23 years of experience doing policy work and leadership at the policy level. I am the Minnesota Chair of the Minnesota Board of Social Work currently. I volunteered with the Citizens League to do a tax study for the city of St. Paul in 2017. I own a home on the East Side, and my daughter goes to Johnson High. I am passionate about the East Side, as my family lives there and my community lives there. I've been a part of the East Side for 23 years. I've come to this race as a community member, wanting to make a difference. I am interested in performance evaluation of how we spend our tax dollars. I want to spend our dollars on doing things that affect people directly, like street repair, community safety, parks and libraries, and I intend to represent all voices in Ward Seven. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go next to Kartumu.
My voice has kind of gotten a little bit, so I apologize. My name is Kartumu King. I was born in Liberia and moved to St. Paul, Minnesota in 1990. I have been here in the city of St. Paul for over 30 years. The East Side of St. Paul have mainly been my home for the last 20 years. A mother of three, graduated from Johnson High School, went to the U of M and got my certificate for Health Information Technology at St. Paul College. I am a regular person. I've had trials and tribulations in the city, and I have been brought to a space of government and seen that decision-making process was not working for the people of St. Paul, so I have decided to put myself in this race a second time, and I'm here to answer your questions, and hopefully your views matches my views, and you come out and vote November 7th, before November 7th, but on November 7th. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. Shaniqua?
Well, hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Shaniqua Johnson, and I am proud to be the DFL endorsed candidate that is running here in St. Paul for Ward Seven City Council. And one of the things about me that I think is just really, I love to share, is I started most, like a lot of people that are looking through politics, not thinking that it would be my day job or the thing that I got into. I'm originally from Worthington, Minnesota, which is a small rural town in southwest Minnesota. So I spent all of my life in Minnesota and went to the University of Minnesota. I have a bachelor's degree in Family Social Science, which has given me a unique view to politics because I don't go in often thinking just about the laws or the ordinances in place, but the impact that they have on people and, you know, and all people, including the folks that have shared my experiences moving to the East Side as a first-time home buyer, to sharing my experiences going to college as a first-generation college student, to also being in spaces where I often think about, how does politics work for us that may not always be at the center of our government structure? And so often, when I'm choosing to run, or if I have chosen, you know, to step up to be a city council member, I think it's because the local government should be the closest to the people. And I've spent several years in politics, working for several elected officials that I have found to be really grassroots-oriented, including Attorney General Keith Ellison when he was in Congress as a congressional staffer. I've also had an opportunity to work at the state level and at the local level. And, you know, when you think about years of experience and individuals talking through, as a young person, I'm pretty proud to talk about how sometimes being new at something isn't a bad thing, as long as you're willing to take a chance on yourself, but also organize with community. And so I'm hoping to do that at City Hall, but obviously with our community and for Ward Seven, and specifically on East Side and in our community, where we don't often always know who is at the table making decisions for us, because we want to be able to talk to them directly.
Thank you, Shaniqua. Dino?
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Dino Garen. I'm a lifelong East Side resident. I went to Harding High School. I've been over on the East Side my entire life. I put over 31 years in the St. Paul Fire Department. I worked up through the ranks from firefighter, EMT, to captain, to district chief, so I know the city well. I currently work for the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office, where I'm emergency coordinator. I consider myself, and I've established myself, as a public safety leader, and the reason I'm running is because the explosive growth of crime in St. Paul. It's become very violent over there, especially on the East Side. It's not safe. I think I can help with that, with all the experience I have. I work well with the police department. I work well with Sheriff Fletcher, with former Chief Finney. They all have a vision of what we could do to make St. Paul safer, and it really starts with holding the youth accountable. Currently, there's no facility for them. We really need a facility for them. It's not only for incarceration, it's to get these kids treatment, to get them role models, to get them mental health issues, or maybe they have addiction, but we need to get these kids off the street into a facility. And I will like to add that it's a very small percent of the kids that are committing the majority of the crimes, but make no mistake about it, it's not kids stealing, you know, cars. I mean, they're violently carjacking people with guns. It's dangerous out there. The city, and really the DFL Party, which runs the city, has turned their back on the residents, and it's time somebody stood up and said, "Let's do something about crime." Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. Alexander?
Hello, you all. Thank you for joining us. With over a decade of experience in political strategy and community engagement across multiple states, I have demonstrated a remarkable commitment to uplifting communities. My track record includes restoring voting rights in two states and collaborating with various organizations to provide essentials, advocate against violence, and improve living conditions throughout the city of St. Paul. Having facilitated free laundry, redistributed fresh fruit and produce, and offered Thanksgiving meals, I have directly impacted the lives of over 800 families. I'm very proud of that. Through partnerships with law enforcement, advocacy for renters, and crime prevention efforts, I have made neighborhoods safer, right here in the city of St. Paul. Guiding families out of poverty with budgeting and ensuring educational equity and promoting local businesses showcase my dedication to the city of St. Paul. My initiatives expand from securing emergency aid during COVID-19 to champion voting rights and preserve, excuse me, preserving our heritage right here in the city of St. Paul, through public art, that is. With an extensive history of community support, leadership, and impactful results, I am the ideal candidate for St. Paul City Council. I have a strong connection to the East Side, where my upbringing has shaped my understanding of our community. I remember when we had a time where people were being able to afford their lives. You know, right now, quite frankly, people aren't able to, and I want to make sure that everyone is benefiting from strong city services, regardless of your race, ethnicity, class, or even socioeconomic background. I want to make sure that people are able to age in place without the fear of social, institutional, or environmental harms. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander. I'm going to wait for a second. Alexander, we're going to stick with you for this first question. It's actually brought to us from one of our partners, IATA Leads. Do you support St. Paul's current rent control ordinance, which caps increases at 3% annually or allows to seek an exemption? If not, what would an ideal policy look like?
Yeah, you know, I work really hard, along with so many other individuals, including Kartumu here on the panel, to ensure that we pass rent stabilization throughout the city of St. Paul. It would mean the world to me if we were able to get back to the drawing board and create something that's conducive to not only the families here in St. Paul, which are usually larger families in more dense communities, but also those on the other end that contribute directly to our bottom-line tax base. We can have development without displacement, and people should be able to afford their lives.
Shaniqua, we're going to go to you next.
Well, I would say no. I don't support the current ordinance as is, in part because I think when we're looking at the fact that 60% of the rental base is exempt in some capacity, I think it's important to note that that means that 60% of renters aren't benefiting from it. I've talked to a lot of renters in the community, and you've seen, maybe even recently, a lot on the Star Tribune and other spaces where they've had features, testimonies from renters and from, you know, our union partners and alibis partners and developers about this ordinance. And I think it's important to understand that when it took place, there was a major, major scenario, our global pandemic, that actually changed a lot, including property taxes, inflation, and other things that have catered now to a space where often properties can be certified for almost 8% of an increase in rent, just based off of inflation and property taxes alone. And so in the space where this ordinance is, I think personally needs to be reworked, but also, you know, to answer your question, not necessarily right now, working for the people it was supposed to.
Thank you. Padre?
Thank you very much. I would be interested in doing a reevaluation of our rent stabilization ordinance. I too have heard personal stories from renters who, where landlords are raising rent every single year, or having raised it right before the ordinance was put in place. You know, I think that, you know, on the East Side, housing, we're having a housing crisis on the East Side, and so we have to work together as a community. I would like to talk to developers. Well, ever since the rent stabilization was put in place, development slowed down, and that's hurting our housing stock. And so I would like to rework it to find a way for both all communities to work together and somehow increase our housing stock.
Kartumu?
Can you please read the question again, please?
I sure can. Do you support St. Paul's current rent control ordinance, which caps increases at 3% annually or seek an exemption? If not, what would an ideal policy look like?
So 3% was what the people were asking for, right?
The current policy caps increases at 3% annually.
Okay. So as far as the rent control goes, I think there was a vote that the people of St. Paul voted for, and I think we need to listen to the people, because me personally, I know people in the community who cannot afford their rent. I know people who are working but can't find a place to stay, so I think that we should actually listen to the voters and what they ask for and try to work in a frame that's going to work for everybody.
Thank you. Dino?
Yeah, I didn't support the ordinance when it was proposed, and I don't support it now. Developers have chosen to not develop in St. Paul unless there's a government handout to lower their costs. Building permits are way down. The ordinance failed. It's already been amended twice by the city council, so they pretty much have admitted that it's a failed ordinance. So I would vote to repeal it. It doesn't work. It's hurting development. The only people we're getting to develop in St. Paul are people looking for subsidies, so it's a bad piece of policy that should be rescinded.
Dino, we're going to stick with you for this next question. Many residents feel their input on significant neighborhood decisions is not genuinely considered, or that outcomes are predetermined and engagement efforts are simply a box to check off. As our prospective City Council rep, how will you enhance the public engagement process to ensure more meaningful community involvement in decisions?
Well, people do elect you to lead, and so you get input and you disseminate information to all the constituents, and then you make the decision that you think is best for your neighborhood. You're never going to get 100% agreement. We do have community councils already in place that allow community input to come up to the city council, but really, it's about prioritizing what issues are important. And currently, the issues that are being addressed by the city, the average taxpayer is not interested in it. They're worried about crime. They're worried about juvenile crime, and the city is reluctant to do anything about it. There's no support for the police department, and I'm going to go on record by saying the St. Paul Police Department is a great department. It's one of the best departments in the country.
Alexander?
Absolutely. Thank you for your question. You know, public input is important. Prioritizing community engagement to understand residents' needs and preferences will certainly be a priority. I think this can provide valuable insights to in which services are essential, and really just adhere to the needs of the residents. I think we need to continue to focus on outcome-based approaches, so making sure that we can focus on outcomes rather than simply cutting services. That is something that is being considered in some areas. I feel like if a service isn't achieving its intended outcome, then we should be exploring ways to reallocate resources to make sure that we are providing more effective services to all residents throughout the city of St. Paul.
Kartumu?
Actually, one of the reasons that I'm sitting in front of you here today, I have lived in the city of St. Paul, like I said, for over 30-something years, and I was never taught about the city council, the government, in school. I'm from immigrants, refugees, so my parents didn't know this, and I was brought in, I spent a lot of time at the courthouse, but didn't know the city council was upstairs, which I slapped myself today, like I wish I would have known. But there's a lot of people in our city that are not engaged, and the entity that are supposed to engage them are not doing their job. The district councils are supposed to be the middlemen to educate the citizens on the government process and procedures and what is needed, and they do not do that. I actually started my business, Accountable Cultural Brokers, LLC, just for this specific reason, and as a city council member, that's what I plan to do, is get the people involved in the decision-making that is affecting their lives.
Padre?
Can you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're fine. Many residents feel their input on significant neighborhood decisions is not genuinely considered, or that outcomes are predetermined and engagement efforts are simply a box to check off. As our prospective City Council rep, how will you enhance the public engagement process to ensure more meaningful community involvement in decisions?
Thank you so much. You know, I've thought a lot about this, and I'm so sorry that the neighbors feel that way, you know. I would definitely, you know, I think information dissemination is extremely important, and also community engagement. I would, you know, I'm going to have my legislative assistant work very hard, so I feel for her already, but we'll be doing a lot of community forums, going into different community spaces, cultural spaces. Language is a big concern on the East Side with the high immigrant and refugee community. Many people live on the margins. They're not sure where to find information, where to get, who to talk to, who to call when they have concerns, and so it's important for me, as a city council member, to go out into the communities. You know, I talked to a lot of neighbors, and many people are informed. They're so informed that I always say, you know, "Maybe you should run for city council, too." And so I want to bring these people out to, well, I want to go to them, right? Create these community forums in different cultural spaces so that people feel heard, and then I will be their voice.
Shaniqua?
Well, I think that, you know, community engagement, the process starts now, and I don't think that any of the candidates would be in a space where we'd actually get elected without some real community engagement and talking into neighborhoods and spaces and community members and residents in our ward that genuinely want to be a part of the process. And what I'm finding, door-to-door, on the phones, is a lot of folks, you know, this is really important to us because we're living in it right now, but this is not something that people are often thinking about, how to best utilize their voice in local government. And that starts, I think, with how engaging the candidates can be, how the elected officials show up, and which communities, and all communities, at the doors where people are. Community forums are really great, and then we have those spaces sometimes where it's the same individuals joining or coming to the community forums or listening sessions or contacting the council member because they have direct access. So then I think about a lot of the community members who have never been to City Hall. I think about the individuals who may not even know that there is an open seat or an election happening on November 7th, and I want to be able to be directly involved with them where they are, at their doors.
Thank you, Shaniqua. We're going to stick with you for this next question. Do you support the 1% sales tax referendum that's on the ballot?
I have, you know, shared with the mayor and Kathy Landry, who was our former council member who was leading the Vote Yes campaign, and one of the things I told them was, you know, I'm a leaning yes, and in part, when we look at the sales tax, I have been listening to all sides of the issue intentionally to try and understand the concerns. And for me, right now, when I look at the different projects that are proposed, the park investment and the bridge structures that are proposed in the sales tax, one of the things that I am often looking for is a plan for, if it's put into place, what is the order of the different projects? What is going to be the real commitment from our city? And those are the questions that I'm looking forward to answering and being a part of, if elected. And when we look at the sales tax, I don't see an alternative at this time that's viable. And so when I look at whether or not there's an opportunity to have St. Paulites that pay, but also individuals who come to the city to utilize our services, I see the sales tax as a step forward that could actually be helpful in that space, so everyone can invest in the things that we love much, so much. And so, yes.
Padre?
Thank you, Max. The 1% sales tax will be on the ballot for all voters. I myself will vote yes. However, I know that voting, the vote is based on people's ability to pay, and the poor often suffer the most when it comes to a sales tax. Also, in St. Paul, we don't have enough retail, major retail, to really garner enough resources from people who can pay the 1% sales tax. I also would like to engage the business community in terms of the impact the sales tax might have on them. And so I myself will support it, but I know that it's not something that, you know, people who live on Third Street, Fourth Street, you know, Conway, who are impoverished, would vote for. Thank you.
Dino?
Well, I can tell you that the least creative way of solving a government budget issue is raising taxes. It's the easiest thing to do. The tough thing to do is look for alternative ways. Now, currently, for our road repair, there's multiple funding sources. There's local government aid. There's community development block grants. There's capital improvement budget, and there's federal funding. There's plenty of funding streams. We don't need to tax the people in St. Paul more. And again, there's other solutions. You need to prioritize your spending and consolidate down. If roads are important, then we shift the resources to it. But raising taxes is not the answer, and I would vote no.
Alexander?
Very pressing issue. To address St. Paul's infrastructure issues, a combination of strategies is needed. First passing the proposed 1% sales tax, I believe, can provide a significant source of funding for essential projects. Prioritizing the most critical repairs and maintenances based on safety and impact on residents should be the focus, and I'm confident in this administration that it will be. Collaboration with neighbors, even neighboring municipalities, can also lead to cost-sharing opportunities and efficient resource allocation. Additionally, exploring the public-private partnerships, excuse me, for specific partnerships, excuse me, specific projects could leverage expertise and funding. Regular maintenance to provide proactive planning, I think, is crucial to prevent future backlogs. Right now, you know, everyone's not benefiting from city services. You know, just today, on the side streets over in McRovlin, we saw a whole lot of potholes getting filled, whereas on the East Side, that's hardly ever. And so I want to make sure that everyone benefits, and I think this is a great step forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Kartumu?
Can you please read the question again? I'm sorry.
I can. Do you support the 1% sales tax referendum that's on the ballot?
You know, it's hard because it's taxes, you know, and in my ward, like, we are really struggling to survive, so I would say I would let the, because that's something that the voters have to decide, and that's the sad part, because especially in my ward, we don't have a lot of voters turn out, and a lot of people don't know what issues are going on. So at this point in time, I'll vote, and I'll let the voters answer that question.
Kartumu, we're going to stick with you for this next question. Do you have a plan to address juvenile crime?
You know, one of the things that I have learned in this space is that we don't never prepare, there's a lot of entities and agencies that don't prepare for the next people to take on. In the city government, we have 19 departments. I feel like we need to build some type of educational internship with the children of the community, so we develop them to be next up to take over as we get older and move on. So I really want to bring the youth and the young adults in our city into the government space and into this arena to really understand how their lives are being affected. Just four years ago, when the TIF money was given to Highland Grove, my son and my daughters and nieces and nephews and kids in my community are now responsible for taxes that they might not never enjoy Highland or never go over there. So I think we really need to bring the kids into this, because as they grow and stay in the city of St. Paul, they will be affected by this, by the government space.
Dino?
Parents of juvenile offenders are begging us to help. They're looking for help, and part of it, we need to get our police department back to full staffing. We need a facility for these kids. As you well know, Totem Town no longer exists, and we need a facility, because at this facility, if these kids have mental health issues, they have, you know, substance abuse, we can get them the treatment that they need. And just as important, if they're off the street and they're incarcerated, they can't reoffend. Right now, it's a revolving door. Nobody's doing anything about it, and really, the city needs to work with Ramsey County and build a juvenile correctional facility.
Alexander?
Absolutely. To address public safety concerns in our ward across the city, I think we should be prioritizing prioritizing and taking a multi-faceted approach. Firstly, community policing initiatives that foster positive relationships between law enforcement and residents, I think is crucial. Investing in community programs for our youth, mental health services and addiction treatment can help, excuse me, address the root cause issues. You know, I've been that juvenile delinquent right here in the city of St. Paul. And so, you know, this notion that, you know, resources aren't here to support juvenile delinquents is false, because I, while I still may have challenges throughout my life and even as an adult, you know, I'm very proud of the challenges that I've been fortunate enough to overcome. I think the more we can work collaboratively to get juveniles to understand that they have a choice. They can either be a product of their environment, or they can be a product to their environment. And hopefully, they choose the latter, and so, thank you.
Shiniqua.
One of the things that I think is really important to this question is to understand that sometimes in spaces where we, especially here on, well, on the east side in Ward 7, I think some of the biggest spaces or notion is to, when you see a hike in, in crime or in crime rates, is to not invest. And my biggest thing is, no, you need to actually do the opposite, which is investing in our young people. And again, meeting people where they are at. Oftentimes, in local government structures, I don't, you know, people talk about youth, they talk about engaging young people, they talk about bringing young people a part of the process, and then when a young person steps up to potentially run for office or even to get involved in the decision-making process, they're told to, you know, that they're not qualified enough, or that they're this, they're that. And so one of the things that I would say, you know, in short, I do think that there is a need to truly see public safety as a workforce issue. And when we look at our firefighters, which I'm proud to be endorsed by the local firefighters, there is a lot of conversations around what it looks like to bring a new fire, a new full-time firefighter to staff, because we haven't done that in over 20 years. It is a workforce issue, and it directly impacts our community.
Podder.
Thank you so much. There are, I have so many ideas, you know, and my heart is with the families of the youth as well as people who have been affected by juvenile crime. You know, I would increase our community engagement officers, provide educational support to youth in schools, really stop that school-to-prison pipeline, increase job opportunities for youth, and wrecking, wreck centers and park centers, programming for youth, as well as mental health support for our families and youth in the schools. I would invest in neighborhood, neighborhood building efforts, work with our district councils to do youth programming and so forth. But most of all, I would really want to focus on supporting our families, right, from birth all the way to 12th grade. Thank you.
Podder, we're gonna stick with you for this next question.
Okay.
What can or should be done to keep residential real estate affordable for local buyers?
That's a great, that's a great question. Residential properties. This is a huge issue right now. If anybody has been following the housing market, homes are more expensive than ever. With the interest rate increase, we did see a slight decrease in the prices of homes. You know, I think that we can also address this issue from the other end in terms of, I know that we have many, many down payment support programs. My sister over here, she's actually a first-time home buyer, and she's buying and closing on November 1st with $20,000 down payment assistance from the state of Minnesota. So I think if we can increase our home buyer programs, first-time home buyer programs, as well as really pay attention to the interest rate, you know, city council, we don't have that, that ability. But I also, I would like to build smaller homes, you know. If you look at the market right now, we have these gigantic homes that most families can't afford. And so investing in smaller homes, condos, townhomes that are more affordable.
Alexander.
Affordable housing is certainly one of the top priorities on our platform. To address the affordable housing crisis effectively, the city should take a multi-pronged approach. First, incentivizing the construction of affordable housing units through tax incentives and streamlined permitting process, I think is crucial. I know that one of our opponents doesn't necessarily agree to that, but that's okay. More importantly, promoting mixed income developments, I think, can create a more balanced community. Investing in homeless prevention programs, mental health services, and addition to addiction treatment can address the root causes of the housing instability that many face today. Protecting renters' rights with stronger tenant protections and rent control measures, I think, is essential. Furthermore, exploring public-private partnerships for affordable housing projects can leverage resources efficiently. Encouraging the adaptive reuse of vacant buildings and underutilized spaces, I think, can also expand housing options. Finally, zoning reforms that allow for higher density and mixed-use income, excuse me, misused development, I think, can increase our housing stock to be more conducive to the families that we have right here in the city of St. Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dino.
Yeah, you know, back in 2009 and 10, when the housing market crashed and home values were low, there wasn't any more homeowners ownership in St. Paul than there is today when values went up. The real issue is access, and I think the city should support the current programs in part there with the local banks, the private entities, support more, you know, homeownership programs, and look at the barriers that are there and try to remove them.
Shiniqua.
May you repeat the question?
Yeah. What can or should be done to keep residential real estate affordable for local buyers?
Well, one of the things too that's important is investing local. You know, when we're thinking about local buyers, it also means that the owners are intentionally local. And when we look at the landlords and we look at the overall property owners in Ward 7, a lot of spaces, sometimes in commercial, commercial property as well as residential, they have maybe an owner who doesn't live in St. Paul, or in a space where we've been able to really dictate the costs overall of real estate, a lot of things drive up the market, including how much the property was assessed for. And I'm learning a thing or two about that as I sit on the Ramsey County Appeals and Equalization Committee, that really oversees how markets are assessed, how real estate is assessed over time. And a lot of people don't even know that they can challenge an assessment, or what the assessor has claimed that their value of their property is. And then if they know they can do it, they don't know the process. And so we also need to, as a local community, organize to really push back against that, that increase. But on the other side of that is we need to make sure that we're providing opportunities for local St. Paulites to actually purchase, own, and sell their space so that we, or their property, so we can continue to think about each other.
Cartumu.
So, there is a program, I think, that Minneapolis did, I'm not sure of the program name, where it was giving people the opportunity to own homes in the community that they grew up in. And they had, I think, I don't know, for bait, but it was some type of process of procedures where they could stay, they had to stay in the home for a certain amount of years, and they were given out, you know, money to help them with the upkeep and the payment. I think that's something that the city of St. Paul should really look into. And then, like, the programs, the programs are good, but sometimes they have stipulations that's not conducive to people. So just looking at different ways that we could be effective in making sure that the people of St. Paul have some investment in the city of St. Paul as far as when it comes to homes.
Thank you. We're gonna stick with Cartumu. I do have to remind all the candidates, please keep an eye on the time. When you see the red card, please wrap it up. Cartumu, what are your thoughts on increasing property taxes?
You shouldn't do it. You shouldn't do it. The citizens of St. Paul are hurting, they're hurting. I'm not a property owner, but I could just imagine, you know, like, every year we're raising property tax, and then we're overtaxing people. I hear people complaining all the time, all the time, and overtaxing, double taxing. So I think at this point, like, we really need to scale back and, like, look at other options to do the things that we need to do to maintain our city, rather than steadily taxing the people of the city.
Shiniqua.
Well, there are gonna continue to be initiatives or things that will be put forward to increase our property taxes. I think if anyone tells you that they're gonna wave a magic wand and make it so our property taxes won't go up, that they're misleading you. And in part, when we look at what's happened over the last few years, I do think that we're hitting a cap, however, in people's ability to pay for their home. They're being priced out of the property that they own, some who have owned it for many years, some who just bought it. And when we think about property taxes and even just the property tax conversation, you can't have a property tax conversation without an expanding the tax-based conversation. And in St. Paul, our population has continued to maintain stagnant and hasn't seen a lot of significant increase. And so when we look at multi-use or multipurpose development, when we think about actually being able to have development that caters to the tax base, this could be nice incentives or ways to basically offset us having to rely at the city level on property taxes and other forms of taxes alone. And so that space, as well as more investment from the state as well, is really important to trying to make sure that we continue to build our revenue as a city, so our property taxes or our taxpayers don't have to fill that.
Podder.
Repeat the question.
What are your thoughts on increasing property taxes?
Thank you so much. I've talked to a lot of residents, and, you know, this is a really hard issue, especially with the increase in our property values. The, our taxes did not only go up 15 point, 14.56%, in many cases, it tripled, right? Or a third more than, than 30% of taxes increase. And so I think that, you know, I'm really concerned about elders who may have their homes paid off, and then they're being taxed out. Let's see here, I'm so sorry here. What do I think about property taxes? You know, I think that there are many different ways to fund our city services, rather than going back to our taxpayers continuously. So I would want to explore other ways. And also, I would want to evaluate how we are spending our current tax dollars more efficiently, so that we're not continuously going back to our taxpayers.
Dino.
Yeah, again, the least creative way of solving a budget problem is raising taxes. And, you know, I mean, let's face it, the last time taxes weren't raised, the person sitting in the mayor's office was not a Democrat, it was Norm Coleman. And from 1994 to 1999, we did not raise taxes. It was a 0% levy. And I know that because I was on the city council back then, and I initiated the 0%. So it can be done, it can't be done if Democrats are running the city. They just love to spend. We're taxing seniors out of their homes. They can't afford to live in St. Paul. We don't need to raise taxes every year. Prioritize your spending and act accordingly.
Alexander.
Absolutely. My name is Alexander Born, and I'm a Democrat, and I want to help run this city. So, you know, I'd like to, you know, beg to differ. You know, I think that we can pay very close attention to your tax dollars. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but taxes are gonna go up every year. You know, they're legally required to increase your property taxes every year. How much is really at the discretion of the city council, and so, you know, making sure that we're working collaboratively to ensure that we're taxing individuals to a point where they can ultimately be able to afford their houses. You know, there's a big misconception that the city council is responsible for raising your property taxes. The city council actually don't. The Ramsey County, excuse me, Ramsey County, they assess it, and we collect it. In fact, we actually receive the smallest percentage of the total amount of taxes collected. And so, you know, they, those taxes that we collect, it goes to support so many things that many residents depend on today. Thank you.
Alexander, we're gonna stick with you for the next question. Why do you think the east side has such a limited business presence, and what would you do to help businesses thrive?
Absolutely. You know, there's been a lack of divestment, excuse me, a lack of investment in our businesses, particularly our people, excuse me, businesses owned by people of color. And I want to do more. I think that the city council can play a role in making sure that we're equipping businesses with the tools and resources to be able to be sustainable, but not just be able to thrive, but be able to survive, right? And so, you know, I think it'll be crucial to get someone on the city council that's actually ran a business before. You know, it's tough to, you know, govern businesses when you, quite frankly, have never ran a business. And so I think the more that we can do to create pathways to entrepreneurship, to give people the opportunity to be able to afford their lives and be able to have a pathway to prosperity, I think will be very much needed.
Shiniqua.
Well, one of the things that I would say is I don't see a shortage of entrepreneurs on the east side. I see a lot of people with ideas. I see a lot of folks tabling to support their own LLC, their own small business. When it comes to the transition of actually being able to afford an actual brick and mortar or an actual space for them, I do see a gap in east siders being able to access the same buildings that we shop at. And so when we look at the partnerships for, like, Sunray Shopping Center, I think there needs to be some intentional relationship building with the property owner to talk a little bit about what the structure is or the pathway for east side businesses to access that building. When we look at 7th Street, a lot of renters are commercial space renters or tenants that actually don't own the building that they're in and they have been in for the last three, sometimes 20, 30 years, three decades. And when we think about that access or a co-op model to being able to actually own their space, a lot of people are looking for that resource. And, you know, not to mention that we need to see some intentional investment in the Developers of Color Program at the city of St. Paul. I think when we're looking at ways to make sure that our community is being able to own their property, that's gonna be the step to getting more people to actually own space.
Cartumu.
Can you read the question one more time, please?
Yeah. Why do you think the east side has such a limited business presence, and what would you do to help businesses thrive?
I want to say it's a mismanagement of funds, and it's a selection of discrimination. I actually worked at the Dayton's Bluff District Council, which was a hub to create businesses for the community. Some of the problem is, the people that are working in our district councils are not from St. Paul, they don't know St. Paul, and they don't understand St. Paul. So they come from other places with major ideas, and they bring whoever that they're associated with to St. Paul, so they're not engaging the community. I didn't even know there was a space until I went up in there for a radio station, and the opportunities, like Shinika said, we're not short of entrepreneurs. I just started my own business, you know, just from being in that space and seeing how my life was being affected by decisions that wasn't being made on my accord. So we really need to see who we're giving our money to and how it's being distributed. We need some enforcement on that, especially when it comes to the east side, because it's not about lack of money, because they're giving the east side money. It's just how it's being used is not proper.
Podder.
Thank you, Max. I agree that, you know, if you go all along Payne Arcade, 7th Street, there are many businesses. And these are BIPOC-owned businesses. You know, we have mall grocery stores, you know, Mexican grocery stores, restaurants, ice cream shops, coffee shops, all owned by BIPOC families. You know, entrepreneurship is one of the first ways to build generational wealth. And so I would like to see the city support our communities of color go into entrepreneurship. I would like to also see neighborhood revitalization, cleaning up of our streets. You know, our streets are very neglected on the east side. If you go along Minihaha and 7th, you will see broken sidewalks, you know, streets that aren't being repaired, parks that aren't being taken care of and so forth. So I would advocate for improvement of our neighborhoods. In terms of major retail, I think we do need to bring in more major mainstream retail onto the east side. Thank you.
Dino.
Yeah, so I mentioned I don't want to raise taxes, but there is a solution, you expand your tax base. And how you do that is you provide an environment where businesses can prosper. It's little things, graffiti, litter that's on the sidewalks, you go up and down suburban, and, you know, there's nothing but litter. And so the city needs to be proactive on the graffiti, which they used to have a division that would clean it up. The same with litter. Keep the streets safe, provide an environment where businesses can prosper, cut back on regulation, and let the business people, what they do best, run their business, and the tax base will grow.
Dino, we're gonna stick with you for this next question. What funding source or sources would you favor to cover the costs of street repairs, and why?
Well, we've, I've already alluded to that. I mean, there's local government aid, what they call LGA, there's CDBG block grants, there's the capital improvement budget, and then there's federal dollars. And then there is a portion of the property tax that goes for road maintenance. So there's plenty of funding streams available. We don't need to tax the residents with this 1% tax or .01. I mean, you know, I live on McKnight Road, and people can simply cross the street and avoid the tax. And that's one of the issues that we have right now, is there's places in St. Paul that ain't safe, so a lot of people on the east side are not going to Sunray. They're going into Maplewood and Woodbury to shop because they're afraid to shop on the east side of St. Paul, and someone needs to fix it.
Cartumu. Kartuma?
Can you please repeat the question? I apologize.
You're fine. What funding source or sources would you favor to cover the costs of street repairs and why?
So like Dino said, I guess we have many, we have many streams to cover the roadwork. So we won't hopefully tax the people for that. But I think we, because one thing that we always have is construction. We always have street work. I think one thing that we really need to focus on is how to make sure that the roads don't get fixed one year and destroy the next. We need to look at different options of upkeeping so we're not constantly spending on our roads. But like Dino said, we have many options.
I think the city should invest in modern infrastructure, including transportation, utilities, and digital connectivity. You know, I think in doing so and able to get there, I think we need to understand that, you know, all of these funding sources that people alluded to or mentioned that exist, they do exist. The problem is there's a breakdown in communication between those who facilitate and oversee versus those who have the opportunity to leverage. And so, you know, I want to help bridge that gap. I want to help bring city services to people's front doors. And I think with the right support, we can do this collaboratively and effectively.
Shaniqua?
One of the things that I am hearing also at the doors at times is when you're talking to St. Paul folks, especially in Ward Seven, there's a notion about, you know what, I'd probably pay a little bit more if I could see that completely translate into actual city services. If my streets looked a little better, if my potholes were fixed, if my snow was plowed a different way, a little bit faster, because I see my neighbors across the street have different experiences outside of the city limits. And so when I look at the, you know, first thing that I think is really important is the relationships between the local, state, and federal government, especially when it comes to issues like roads and overall transportation needs. And so that local government aid push coming out of the state legislature is really important. Making sure that we're able to restore local government aid is significant for our city, including expanding the tax base. And yes, you know, some of our forms of taxes that we rely on heavily is a little, you know, is in a space where sometimes our taxpayers have to put in a little bit more. But when we look at our property taxes, which they do fund a lot of our residential streets and roads, that investment needs to be more intentional and how we utilize our funding to fix our streets matters. And I want to make sure that that also happens on the east side.
Potter?
Thank you. The other candidates already brought up all the things that I would have brought up. Thank you, Dino, for listing the LGA community program aid and federal dollars and so forth. But I would like to revisit our 2017 pilot study, which I sat on. Pilot stands for Payment Through Taxes. Thirty percent of St. Paul's property is non-taxable. However, they use city services. You know, the uses of their services park on our streets. And, you know, they use, you know, police and fire and all the city services without paying into the city. So I would like to revisit that study and figure out a way to build relationships with our nonprofit community to contribute to street repair, on top of all the other things that the other candidates wonderfully mentioned. Thank you.
Shaniqua, we're going to go to you for this next question. When the city repairs streets, there is an opportunity to redesign streets to reduce traffic speeds and increase the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Would you champion policies to encourage redesign consideration?
I will always champion any initiative that comes from community and that is incented to make our lives on the east side of St. Paul better. And in a space where I see sometimes an opportunity to redesign something to make it easier for the average person, I'll take every advantage of that. And so when we look at initiatives and policies that directly impact a lot of neighbors, a lot of community members, oftentimes something doesn't need to necessarily be recreated to be better. But maybe there is some space for updating, that maybe there is some space for investment. And I feel like infrastructure on the east side is a big part of that. When I look at the roads and I walk through the streets and I see the sidewalks and the conditions of our roads, the intersections that sometimes are near misses to fatal crashes, when I hear about people that are currently operating our public transit system, having to maneuver spaces that sometimes are very inconvenient for the person that is relying on things other than cars to get through our city, I think there is a space and opportunity to redesign, to develop further, to invest more into space to easily access the east side to downtown or to connect us to many resources across the area. So I'll always be a champion of things like that because it touches many lives and it's bigger than just us.
Potter?
Can you repeat that?
Yes. When the city repairs streets, there is an opportunity to redesign streets to reduce traffic speeds and increase the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Would you champion policies to encourage redesign consideration?
Yes, absolutely. This is something that I hear from residents who live on major streets like Burns, you know, people just speeding. And so that is a huge fear of our residents. So yes, definitely, I would support redesign to slow down our traffic and increase safety for our pedestrians and cyclists.
Alexander?
Yes, I think investing in a well-connected network of pedestrian walkways, bike lanes, and transit routes is important. To your notion, you know, street design is important, but it should be designed to accommodate different models of transportation and prioritizing safety for use. You know, we can, through advocacy and, you know, ask for additional support for public transit upgrades. You know, right now, a lot of people don't even feel comfortable utilizing public safety, excuse me, public transit avenues. And so, you know, I want to help clean up those bus stops, you know. In light of COVID-19, through collaboration, we were able to get porta potties along the train routes, you know, to help our unsheltered populations. I think, you know, that was a great step in the right direction, but it didn't really provide all the wraparound services that I had hoped for and advocated for. And so I think, you know, the more we continue to work with Met Council, work with our small business community, as well as our neighbors, I think the quality of life will be better. I grew up using the sixty-four, seventy-four, and sixty-three bus lines, you know, and I still use them today. I'm a biker. I walk. And I even shovel out our cop routes in the winter to make sure that those with limited mobility have access. So thank you.
Kartuma?
I'm sorry about this, but can you repeat the question for me, please?
Yeah. When the city repairs streets, there is an opportunity to redesign streets to reduce traffic speeds and increase the safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Would you champion policies to encourage redesign consideration?
I would champion it if the people, the voice of the people was involved. Because I went to a development meeting a while ago when they were talking about doing the bikes and going towards paint or failing. And the residents in there were asking for something different, but the planning and development department, they already had their notes together. This is what we're going to do. And there's nothing you could do about it, but go along with it. And the people that were living in the neighborhoods was like, can you please just fail the potholes? That's all we're asking for. And me personally, the change on Maryland, even though it's not in my ward, Maryland was already a dangerous street with two lanes. And now they changed it to one lane. And it's crazy because people are just doing whatever to get through. And I'll tell anybody living in the city of St. Paul, if something happened to your car on Maryland Avenue, sue the city. Sue the department, the planning department, because they are the ones that made these decisions without our input. And so they're putting our lives at harm.
Dino?
McKnight is down to one lane from, you know, Minnehaha to Carver. And there was an accident about four hours ago. There's this one lane and there's always a turn lane. And people used a turn lane to pass. And since the St. Paul Police Department doesn't have a traffic unit anymore because of budget cuts, people are using those lanes to pass cars when it should be for turning. So, and then on the bike lanes, you know, we live in Minnesota and we're allowing all this space for about fifteen people that use bicycles to get to 3M every day. It's absolutely crazy. The bike lanes are not safe. Some of them are actually in the middle of the road. There's hardly anybody using them. We have nothing but trails in Battle Creek area where people can go on their bikes off trail. But to take dedicated parts of the street and take away all the parking in Upper Afton did not do the residents any good. There's not enough people using bikes in Minnesota. It rains, it snows, it freezes. There's no reason that we should be allocating so much space for such a small group of people that are on bikes.
Alexander, we're going to go to you for this next question. What can city government do to make Narcan more widely available, including making it available to the general public?
Absolutely. You know, this is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart. You know, having grown up here on the east side in a very impoverished community, I've seen drugs take over lives for many years. And so, you know, I think it's well beyond time for the city council to step up and provide the community members with the training and the tools and the resources that they need to be able to help save the next life. We glorify police officers when they save a life, right? That's great. But imagine how many more community members we can help glorify and acknowledge by saving a life. You know, at Hardin High School, you go in there, you talk to those students, you talk to those faculty members. You know, we have overdosing, excuse me, overdoses happening every single day, excuse me, very frequently, not every day, but very frequently. And I'd love to see St. Paul Public Schools, Ramsey County, as well as the city of St. Paul, work more collaboratively to equip us with the tools and resources because I'm ready. I'd love to have that training. And I'm sure there's many neighbors out there that would also, to help prevent the next overdose. Thank you.
Shaniqua?
Yeah, I think when I look at this, you know, this question, the investment in education's going to be crucial and vital so that people know actually how to properly utilize and use or service or provide Narcan to individuals. So when I look at the city and the roles that we could play in such an important issue, I think it is investing in our programs, our community-first public safety programs. It's ensuring that there actually is authentic and in-depth community resources and education provided to the average resident, to people like you and I, to actually be able to take that space. Because it's, you know, one thing to be able to help someone and it's a whole nother thing to put a life at risk. And so if we can make sure that we're able to save a life and not harm an individual continuously, that education and resources towards that, to be able to find it anywhere, including in our rec centers and our schools and in our everyday spaces where you and I frequent, even when we think about places like our gas stations that see a lot of folks that are coming in sometimes just to use the bathroom. There are a lot of spaces where we can have just everyday things you don't think about, be an education tool for our community.
Potter?
Can you repeat that?
Yes. What can city government do to make Narcan more widely available, including making it available to the general public?
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. You know, I would like to, I will work with Ramsey County Public Health and our eight million dollar opioid settlement to make Narcan more readily available, especially at our public libraries, rec centers, with our EMT, public, fire, and police. So yes, I mean, I would support any lifesaving efforts throughout the city.
Kartuma?
So my church, Bethlehem Lutheran in the Midway, actually opened our doors to organization who was training people how to give Narcans. And it, you know, is like, you know, people are, what it boils down to and how we saw it is that we're saving lives, you know? Like, people are going to do what they're going to do and we can't stop people from doing drugs if that's what they want to do. But at least we can have spaces to help them so they're not dying, especially if we have the tools to do that. And from what I learned, they have different ways to give it, to the point where you could just stick something in somebody's nose and, you know, and sometimes they could give it to themselves if they feel like they're overdosing. So we'll just have to find different methods to work with the city to see if we can provide that opportunity for people to be safe.
Dino?
Yeah, Narcan used to be an injection. It was like an EpiPen. Today, it's very simple. It's just something you put in the nostrils and there's a plunger and you pull it and it just shoots it into the nostrils. All the employees for the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office carry Narcan. All the St. Paul police officers carry Narcan. All the St. Paul firefighters carry Narcan. And all the suburban fire departments have Narcan. And all the suburban police departments in Ramsey County have Narcan. So a lot of people have done their best. I don't know what St. Paul has done. I'm not on, I don't work for the city anymore and I'm not on the city council. But I can assure you, it would not be difficult to make sure every rec center and people that did business with the city had the Narcan. It's very accessible. It's not expensive. There's no reason for people not to have it.
We're going to stick with you, Dino, for this next one. Just move the mic a little closer if you could.
Sure.
What can the city council, what can the city council do to promote and support financial literacy programming for youth in our communities and schools? What can the city council do to promote and support financial literacy programming for youth in our communities and schools?
Yeah, you know, they can do what Sheriff Fletcher did many years ago into the public high rises. We had deputies and volunteers go into the high rise and read to the kids. At this time, it was the young Mung kids when they first came here. It was a very successful program. But you get role models, you get community leaders, people from the faith community. We go to the playgrounds, we go to the libraries, and we read to kids. And we help them read. It's as simple as that. You bring a book and you sit down with the young person and you help them read. And it's very rewarding to do that. And the kids later on remember you and is very appreciative. I don't think it's complicated, but I'm sure somebody will complicate it.
Alexander?
You know, the truth is, the city council members, if elected, you know, will be able to do a lot, mainly through advocacy, you know, making sure that you have strong relationships with those that sit on the school board that have a lot of power in terms of what we can and cannot implement. We make sure, excuse me, we can make sure that we're strengthening our relationship with our park board to make sure that rec centers are equipped with the tools and resources. There's a lot of things that we can do. But we don't want to lose focus, right? You know, there has to be a balance between, you know, the services that we provide individuals in terms of enhancing the quality of life versus those that we can actually afford to do to enhance the quality of life. You know, the city council, you know, we're running a business, you know? And we have a duty to make sure that everyone benefits from city services. And so, you know, I want to do my fair share.
Kartuma?
You know, my favorite question. I'm just like, can you please repeat the question?
What can the city council do to promote and support financial literacy programming for youth in our communities and schools?
Only you said in schools?
In our communities and schools.
Okay. So like I said, engagement, being direct, being engaged with the people. I ran for city council four years ago. And one of the reasons why I ran was because the city council person at the time, which is currently Jane Prince, I met her at Dayton's Bluff. I didn't know her. And she made a joke that she doesn't go to the, she doesn't go to the district council meetings because they won't allow her. And I felt like that was not, you know, like, what? You're representing me. You should be everywhere. So that's what I would do. I would directly engage. I would go to the people, meet them where they are. We have a lot of spaces in our community where it's a bulk of people. I will go in those spaces and make sure people know that they have this opportunity because that is important. If you don't know money, you can't get nowhere. So financial education is very important. So I would make sure that I'm in all spaces in the ward, Ward Seven, that is.
Potter?
Thank you, Max. I would promote relationships between public and private entities such as, you know, Lutheran Social Services actually has a huge program about financial literacy. And they were actually based out of where District Five Council, Dayton's Bluff District Council is. And they work with community members to increase financial literacy. I would also work with St. Paul Public Schools Community Education, invite community members to actually put on classes for community members. In addition, I would work with our foundations, such as Wells Fargo Foundation, to raise dollars for community education and also Minnesota Humanity Center, which is based right on the east side.
Shaniqua?
Well, one of the things, one of the things that I really want to be intentional about when it comes to this, you know, and it kind of sounds like a broken tune, but how our city council partners with other entities matters. And I see the relationships right now with the school board intentional in this space when it comes to our schools and our St. Paul public schools. And so I'm proud to have, you know, relationships with every single school board member that's candidate that's running. And so when we look at that space of opportunity, I think the city and school partnerships there are really imperative to things like financial literacy. But then on the other side of those spaces, continuously as a program officer at the St. Paul Minnesota Foundation, one of the things that I'm always intentional about is investing in community and community resources. And so like, yes, philanthropy has a role in local government. But then also the city, you know, has the planning and economic development part of our departments that work intentionally on trying to make sure people have access. There, these different departments within the city also need adequate funding to be able to do things in community in partnership with our businesses and partnership with our rec centers and being a space, once again, as an education rec centers, and be in a space, once again, as an education for everyday residents that really need access to direct information. And so how we do that is making sure that some of these outward-facing departments have or are fully funded through the city.
Shaniqua, we're gonna stick with you for this next question. What improvements or modifications would you make to public transit?
Well, one, I think the process for a lot of our public transit spaces and opportunity often comes into a space where we have, you know, there's, it's kind of downward-led in a space where the government maybe makes a proposal and then they'll do a couple of opportunities for the public to weigh in. I really want to expand on that community investment when it comes to our infrastructure and transit conversations around public transportation, because I think it's been a while at the city level since we had a real conversation about the state of public safety and the state of public transportation. And so when I look at just, you know, the person on, the average east sider on St. Paul that is utilizing 63 and our major improvements around the gold line and the perspective spaces around the purple line, which directly impact the east side, I often wonder where the east side conversations are directly with the people who are gonna be having to make those transit decisions or those different spaces for direct usage of it. And so when I think about the community, I feel like that's a very good opportunity to have early conversations and not last-minute conversations. And so I want to see something that directly, that directly focuses on the state of our current public transit system and features those that utilize it.
Potter?
What improvements or modifications would you make to public transit? Well, I think that transportation is a right, and my daughter takes the bus every day to Johnson High. Every student at Johnson High has a bus pass, they're issued a bus pass. So I would want public transportation to be more accessible. You know, sometimes someone might want, need to get to work or get to school, but they don't have $2, right? And so I would, I would want to change that. In addition, I think, I'm glad that we're expanding our public transportation right now with our gold line and purple line. I would also like to invest in more green electric buses, really follow through on our climate resiliency and action plan.
Dino?
Yeah, it's pretty simple, public transportation simply isn't safe. Currently, the transit police are more ambassadors than they are police officers. The vast majority of the people riding the light rail have not purchased a ticket. There's no enforcement, and a lot of people won't use it. Now, I get it, there's folks that have to, they don't have a vehicle, and I feel sorry for those people because they're in an environment that simply is not safe. They need to have more law enforcement presence with the buses and the light rail, and they need to do their job and enforce the law.
Alexander?
You know, first and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Joanne that's in the crowd today. You know, she worked for many, many years with Ramsey County to ensure that individuals had adequate access to transportation throughout the city of St. Paul, particularly the county. And so, you know, I think, you know, recognizing the fact that we have individuals that put themselves on the line to ensure that we have the tools and resources is very important. But more importantly, we have to make sure that we have community members that are actually leveraging these tools and resources at those conversations. And so, you know, helping to bridge that relationship between our elected officials, representatives of our governmental entities, I think will be important. You know, we have the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, it's a lot of great things in there, but again, you know, there's a breakdown in communication between what's in there and those that are actually practicing it and/or that we want to practice what's in that. And so, you know, we have work to do, and I'm confident in individuals and residents throughout the city of St. Paul to get to where we need to be.
Kartuma?
Max.
What improvements or modifications would you make to public transit?
I took the bus for a long time until I got a car, and never took the bus again. But, um, it's crazy because like, it all comes down to engagement and really engaging the community. As far as transit goes, there is a lot of people that wanted it, there was a lot of people that didn't want it, there's a lot of people in the community that don't know what's going on. So improving it, possibly engaging the people more for understanding, like, right now, like, what's going on on 94, like, I have a lot of neighbors over there that are complaining about that, you know, and that was, I think that was a decision that was made without a lot of the people over there, you know. So as far as safety, you know, they should have thought about that when they were putting this together. So we have to go back and look at what was done, what wasn't done, and figure out what's the best thing that we could do to keep everybody safe.
We're gonna go to our final question before our closing statements. Kartuma, we're gonna stick with you. How would you address a concern or an issue that is not necessarily a priority concern or issue to you?
First, I will listen to what the issue is. I will ask questions about the issue, I will do my research about the issue, and try to understand what are the options and the choices to, that will best help with this issue.
Dino?
Well, if it was something good for the city or it could benefit that individual, it doesn't have to be one of my priorities, so obviously I would look to solve it. If it was something just frivolous that I have no interest in, then I'd have no interest in it.
Alexander?
You know, I think everyone deserves to benefit from city services, so, you know, regardless of how long you've been in the city, where you grew up in the city, where you live in the city, and so, you know, making sure that we're treating every individual with respect and dignity is important. You know, making sure that we understand that there is humanity in every individual and, you know, some things may not be in our backyard, for lack of better terms. That doesn't mean that it's not a priority. You know, we have many city departments that we can work with to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our residents, we have our district councils, and we also have other avenues throughout the community. And so, you know, I look forward to connecting individuals with resources to address their most pressing needs.
Shaniqua?
Well, one of the things too, I think that's important is we are running to be a public servant essentially to our entire community. And so when we look at Ward 7 and we look at issues, I think it's unfair to say that if someone brings up something or a concern to you that it's not your issue or it's not your priority. It should be, because your constituents and community members are bringing it up to you, and it's your job to educate yourself about the issue. So if you're in a space where you're like, that's not necessarily something I know a lot about, then I think it's the job of a council member, or really anybody who's holding a public office, to take the time to learn. And if you can't do that by just directly talking, you're reading a textbook, then you need to go back to the community that brought it to you and let them lead in that journey. And I see this often in local government and spaces where I feel like sometimes the loudest voices in the room is the one that's heard, and not often is it invested in a space where maybe we disagree on something, and maybe you can teach me something. And so I'm not a candidate that's running thinking that I know everything, and there's definitely gonna be issues that come up that maybe I haven't even heard of or began to brought in a priority space, but it immediately becomes a priority because the people in the community have made it, so.
Potter?
Thank you, Max. I won't pretend to be an expert on everyone's lived experiences, but I do know that the city has a big responsibility for taking care of every resident, regardless of age, gender, race, economic background, nationality and so forth. And so that's a position that I will take, is that when a constituent comes to me with a concern, they, I don't understand, I might not understand that lived experience, but I know that's very important to them. And my job as a city council member is to find the right resources to help them solve whatever issues that they're facing. And so I, you know, I'm a social worker by trade, you know, I've been a social worker for 23 years. I worked on the east side for much of that time and still a social worker. I've seen family, families struggle with mental health, you know, school concerns, transportation, economic access, violence, the whole gamut. And so I know that we all have different lived experiences, and I'm in this because I care about my community deeply, and every voice is important to me. And so when someone comes to me, I will try, do my best to help them.
So we're gonna move now to our closing statements. A reminder for the candidates, you have two minutes. Again, please pay attention to the 30-second and stop cards. We're gonna go in the opposite order of opening statements, which means, Alexander, we are gonna start with you.
Absolutely. The leadership style I intend to bring to the St. Paul City Council, it centers co-governance. You know, people need to feel a part of the process and, more importantly, be a part of the process. I firmly believe in working alongside community members, local organizations and fellow council members to collectively shape the future of our ward and city of St. Paul. By fostering an environment of an active collaboration, inclusivity and shared decision-making, we can ensure that the policies and initiatives that we implement truly reflect the needs and aspirations of our constituents. Together, I believe that we can create a stronger and more vibrant community for everyone. For years, I've dedicated unwavering efforts to advocate for unsheltered neighbors, championing housing-first initiatives and, excuse me, that encompasses comprehensive support systems. I'd like to see the city do more to make sure that we're providing that wraparound service. It's disheartening that a majority of our outgoing city council members chose to overturn the mandate of the voters, introducing a substantial amount of exemptions to the people's rent stabilization bill, but that's not necessarily a bad thing, mainly because what existed and what currently exists isn't conducive to what we need right now in the city of St. Paul. I think it's very important to note that the council should be using its taxing power to judicially, judiciously balance the city's needs and affordability for its residents. While a modest property tax increase may be necessary to maintain essential services and infrastructure, it should be kept as low as possible to ease the burden on property owners. Dedicating a portion of our tax revenue, like the proposed child tax, childcare levy, I think is crucial in terms of providing social services. You know, my mom, she struggled with a lot of those things growing up, and so, you know, I'm excited to embark on this journey, I'm asking that you join me. You know, I'm proud to be Labor and Union endorsed. I've been serving the east side for many years, I grew up here, and I just want to help keep serving the east side. Thank you.
Dino?
Yeah, politically, I'm an independent, this is a nonpartisan race, I'm nonpartisan. If you're concerned about the direction the city's going, you should vote for me. I have over 35 years in public safety, I've established myself as a leader in public safety. If you have concerns about Payne Avenue, Arcade, 7th Street, downtown, if you think Grand Avenue doesn't look like it used to and you're a little concerned, you might want to try somebody different. Again, politically, I'm an independent, the entire city council is DFL, the entire county board is DFL, the entire school board is DFL, the mayor's DFL. Maybe you might want to get a shot to somebody that's just independent, not politically at all, that can help change the direction, support the police department and clean up the city. Thank you.
Shaniqua?
Well, my message is directly for both the Ward 7 residents that are here, as well as the ones that are watching from home or live streaming or will watch this video later. We need to make sure that our community reflects and represents everybody in this room. And when we look at space and opportunity where I see the most growth, it is the local level, it is our local government space. Please do not sit this election out, November 7th is election day, but early voting literally starts on September 22nd. And in a space and an opportunity where we want to see more access to things like affordable housing, more resources for public safety and investment in our actual programs that are dedicated towards trying to bring community along in that process, when we think about a leader who needs to be in every community, not only, you know, in their immediate proximity or around the individuals that are used to being able to hear, to get their voices heard, we need an individual who's going to be willing to go to every door, who's going to be willing to knock and talk to individuals, meet people where they're at, and be all throughout the ward. We have a different experience on the east side, block to block, street to street, family to family, and that needs to be elevated at the local level. And I look forward to being able to utilize, not only just being a DFL endorsed candidate, but being one that's proud of that, because in my space and in my opportunities, I also know that that brings a coalition behind it, because I didn't get endorsed on accident, and 61% of the individuals that voted for me at the endorsement convention were from a lot of different spaces. And in a place where I'm also proud, you know, to be a young person, to be an east sider, to be a Dayton's Bluff resident, to be a first-generation college student, to be someone who decided to join politics because you genuinely understood the concerns that people have and continue to have about our government structure, working for some but not for everybody, it's important that we have a city council member who is, excuse my French, hell-bent on making sure that our city services everyone, no matter what you look like, no matter what your experience is, no matter what your age is, no matter which degree you have or don't have. The east side is a space where I think if you invest in the east side, you're gonna invest in the entire city of St. Paul, and I look forward to being the council member that's being able to lead in that space for everyone and not just for some.
Kartuma?
So, this is my second council race, the first race I got in, you know, just realizing how I was being affected and how the decision-makers were regarding us, the people of Ward 7 in St. Paul as a whole. So I'm back again, and I'm standing on the same platform. I'm here to bring protection to the people, I hold people accountable in my real life. I have, I've been fighting for myself, holding police accountable, holding businesses accountable, employers accountable, because what we fail to realize is, due to our history, there is a lot in access, there's a lot of people that are not participating, that do not know what is going on, people, especially our immigrant community. So I am here to give voice to every citizen in Ward 7, to hold, whether it be my fellow city council members, city departments, Ramsey County, Met Council, the state of Minnesota, accountable to the people of St. Paul. So I am a mother, my children are growing, and they are the next people to be harmed by this city. And if you vote for me, that won't happen, your children or my children will not be harmed because we will definitely hold the people in these positions that are making decisions without our voices accountable. That's why I'm here, I'm here to make sure that we're engaging the people, we're bringing them in the spaces, we're giving them the opportunity to involve, to grow, and we're giving them opportunity to live the best life they can in the city of St. Paul. Thank you.
Potter?
Thank you, Max. You know, the east side is a landing pad for many people, refugees and immigrants from all over. You know, first, if you go into Sweet Hall, you'll be able to see the history of the east side, you know, with the Irish, Swedes, Mexicans, now immigrants from Southeast Asia. And, you know, I chose the east side because it is my community, and I come to this race as a community member, having had 23 years of social work experience, working in community with families on many different issues, also having experience doing policy at the city and at the state level. You know, I want to focus on prioritizing how we are spending your precious tax dollars, reevaluating programs so that we can prioritize the things that affect you directly, such as street repair, you know, community safety, parks and libraries, business development, right, cleaning up of our neighborhoods. I want to revitalize our neighborhoods on the east side. I love Payne Avenue, I love Seventh Avenue, all the shops, you know, we walk it all the time, and, you know, I eat at the ice cream shops, go to the coffee shops, and I want people to come to the east side for all these, all these beautiful gems that we have. And so I want, I want people to trust that, you know, I come here with a passion and love for the east side, and I want to be a voice for all residents on the east side, elders who want to stay in their home, new immigrants who want jobs or entrepreneur opportunities, support for their kids, youth employment, the whole gamut. Thank you.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters, St. Paul, thanks again to our partners, the St. Paul Neighborhood Network, IATA Leads and Sustains St. Paul. Thank you to all of our candidates for Ward 7, thank you to the audience, both in-person and online. Good night.[1721.46][1721.46][applause]
Good job, good job.
Oh, my gosh.
Good job, good job.